Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December twentieth, twenty twenty-one Planning Board meeting. If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I do have to announce this is our last meeting for the year. Our next meeting will be January tenth. Get right into the agenda here. First, we have correspondence. Anybody have any comments about what we got?
Hey, just one, Rich. PJ's memo from the Rec Department is really very good, and I think he is being very cooperative and supportive, but when it comes time to when we get to the appropriate parts of these meetings, I do appreciate the understanding the timeline. We don't often impose any kind of timelines on projects necessarily. They kind of work their way through, but in this case, it is pretty critical that the Rec Department, I guess, have an understanding of whether or not traffic or use of the space will be impeded at all. So just wanted to highlight that. I know we'll get to that in the details, but I think that's an important part of it.
Yeah, I think that's important. Very detailed memo. All right, then we'll move on to the draft minutes we have for the December sixth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Anybody have any issues?
No. No issues.
All right, there's no issues. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move into the regular portion of our meeting. First up, we have a public hearing. This is for Nadine's Restaurant. Location is seven one five Sol Mel River Road. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think someone is trying to connect there.
Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you.
This is Keith Stoudt, Howard Cronin Engineering, representing the applicant Nadine's Restaurant. The project site is seven fifteen Sol Mel River Road. We spoke last month. The project involves the granting or hopefully granting of a special permit to continue the use of the outdoor seating area for the restaurant. And as heard in the testimony last month from the owners, that the outdoor seating has saved them from having to close the shop. So we're looking to see if we can get a special permit from the Planning Board and keep this as a annual permanent setup. We discussed about several things at the last meeting. We provided more information regarding. My apologies. We talked about. All right, good. We talked about the minimal usage of water on site. So we provided the water readings that have been taken daily from the owner. We did a parking calculation based on the usable space inside the restaurant and the area that's used for food prep. And we come up with that we need about fifteen parking spaces and the site contains sixteen. So we feel that since this thing's been operating for the last year and a half this way, we have a police narrative in an email indicating since two thousand sixteen, there have only been about six accidents within a half mile of the site, and none of them are related to this restaurant. So we feel that it'd be appropriate to grant a special permit for this site to continue the outdoor use as an option for the patrons of Nadine's Restaurant. I would like to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
The only question I have is so there's adequate parking on the site. We don't need to concern ourselves about anything on the street. Is that correct?
I don't know if I can say that necessarily, but there's adequate parking on the site. We don't need to provide extra parking if you want to understand for outdoor seating. So based on the size, based on the size of the restaurant, there's adequate parking.
Okay. I'll come back to that after the hearing.
Anybody else from the board? John, anything on your end?
Not at this time.
Jim?
Nothing on my end.
Is Mr. Sarsion?
Yeah, yeah, we were, you know, our main concern was the parking and the and the septic system. So based upon the amount of water consumption, they documented, I guess, the the septic system, you know, we'll have to monitor it, but hopefully, you know, it doesn't appear that they use that much water historically. So the board's obviously aware of the parking situation and you know, we'll just try and find our way through that, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Dan. This is a public hearing, so is there any questions or comments from the the audience? If you could raise your hand? Or instant message, Robin? Give you a minute. See anything, Robin?
No, I don't.
Just a sec, just in case. This is going to be new again, I guess, for a little while.
So Rich, while we while we wait for that, is this our special use permit to grant or are we referring this or have to? Is this our special use permit that we're granting?
It's us.
John?
Yes, yes, it is. It's the Planning Board's special use permit for seating, outdoor seating over twelve seats.
Okay. And typically, a special use permit has what period of time for renewal and that kind of thing?
Depending on the type, but this this type usually ends up being five-year periods. Often, when you start out, you've started with one or two-year periods to see how how it works on a particular site. This site has been operating like this for at least a year with the outdoor seating. So up to you guys what you want to do at the outset of it. But after you, after it's been operating, typically it goes four- or five-year bites.
Okay.
Anything, Robin?
No.
All right, so I think we're quiet on the audience end. All right, then, if there's no more comments from the board, the town professionals of the audience, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Go ahead, I'm sorry, Aaron.
I just wanted to make sure that the traffic situation is is dealt with in a safe manner, not so much on-site. I understand they have enough to go on and they have what they need. Is there any considerations that we should be giving to any issues on the parking on the street, either leaving it as is or suggesting that there not be parking out there and dealing with that in some fashion for safety reasons? I'm not sure.
Well, one of the things that I had mentioned at last month was typically when you look at outdoor seating, you are gauging its seasonal use and the and the likelihood that you will not reach full capacity in both outdoor and indoor seating. So I had brought up to the applicant and the board whether or not it was a reasonable assumption, given the parking at the site, to limit the amount of seating between the outdoor and the indoor. So they've added seventy outside. I think they have fifty-four inside. I don't know that you want to see a hundred and twenty-four seats with, you know, the fifteen or sixteen parking spaces. So that's the consideration that I I had brought up at the last meeting.
I think my concern is not the combination of seating and parking that they provided in their app, you know, what's presently before us, I think is fine. I'm just wondering if as an additional condition, we we want to consider limiting the parking along the street in some way. That's all.
Yep. I think my perspective on that would be that from what I've heard from previous meetings, parking on that street is not illegal. And so I think us taking any position on whether or not people should or should not park there is kind of beyond us. I think if if it's legal to park there, and I don't want to use the term, well, I'm going to, I guess. I don't want to use the term park at your own risk. But it's the same as true in many parking lots within Yorktown. You park at your own risk. Some of the parking lots that we have are ridiculous in the way people maneuver through them and block fire lanes and everything else. So in this case, I think we are oh, I think we're okay to allow people to park legally or have the opportunity to park legally if it's necessary. Again, I look at where we are tonight, right? We're back virtual for a reason. And it's for this very reason that these restaurants need our support. So I would be in favor of granting a special use permit, but perhaps as John suggested, you know, maybe with an earlier review. Or maybe there's a there's a caveat to it that, you know, that looks at it once a year or something like that, you know, it's what John said earlier. So I don't think it's our place to necessarily extend our opinion beyond what is already legal.
Guaranteed. I agree with you a hundred percent.
All right, I accept that, you know, reasoning, Rob. Thank you. And I would suggest we go out for two years on this. They've been out in existence with this already for a year.
Yeah.
No, really no issues.
Right. Okay. I'd support that.
All right. Any other comments? All right, then, do I have a motion for the Town Planning Board to be lead agency? Motion. Is there a second?
My father was the prosecutor who put Chester Weaver in prison for life.
I don't know what you're trying to prove here.
Will's catching up on his.
I don't know what that is.
Will was catching up on his Netflix series, I think.
Give him a chance.
I think everybody's on mute now.
Yeah, no, that's it.
All right, so we had a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then in front of us, we have a neg deck. Do I have a motion? Accept.
Motion.
Second.
All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have. You're muted, Billis Galla.
Raise your hand if you say aye.
And then we have a resolution in front of us, and we're going to amend it for the two-year period as noted. All right, so we have a resolution approving the special use permit for outdoor seating at Nadine's Restaurant as amended in our previous comments. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a public informational hearing. This is for the Yorktown Energy Storage Tier Two Battery Storage System. Location is three nine zero one Gomer Street in Jefferson Valley. Do I have a motion to open the public informational hearing?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
You are on.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Robert Gordioso with the Law Firm of Snyder and Snyder. On behalf of the applicant, we also have with us this evening, Mr. Gregory Gibbons. He is the engineer on the site plan, and Michael Conway also with the with the applicant and engineer that you've seen before and answered a lot of questions regarding this facility. This was actually approved about a year ago, and since that time, the technology's actually improved, and we've been able to shrink down the size of the facility. We've been able to reduce the size of the fenced area, reduce the amount of impervious surface, reduce the height while still keeping all the same landscaping, all the other conditions of the site plan in place. So it's basically a modernization of the equipment, but everything else remains the same as far as the facility. So we brought it back before you with the revised site plan to show that smaller footprint, that smaller height, that small overall fenced compound area. And we had discussed this last month. I know some of you were at the meeting. I think we answered the questions at that time, but tonight is the informational meeting, and we'd be happy to answer any additional questions anybody may have.
Okay, so the tech has changed that much in a year, huh?
You know, it was, it's been changing, and if you remember, there was the moratorium which set us back about a year. So from the time we had actually filed this with the zoning board till the time the moratorium expired and the new code was put in place, and then we got through the process with the Planning Board, you know, by the time by the time we went for the building permit, you know, the new the new technology really took hold.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
John, anything on your end?
Nothing on our end.
Jim?
Nothing on our end either.
Dan? We're good. Okay, it is a public informational hearing, so we'll reach out to the audience. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Give you a minute? Anything, Robin?
No, I don't see anybody.
Yeah, I can't imagine with the reduction in size, it'd be too many questions. All right, there's no other questions or comments or issues? Do I have a motion to close the public informational hearing for the Yorktown Energy Storage Tier Two Battery Storage System?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Gordioso, I'm imagining you're going to want us to schedule a public hearing.
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman.
Robin, can we get that set up?
I can actually, yes, for January tenth.
January tenth. Everybody be ready?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you and have a happy holidays.
Do you too, all the best.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the regular portion of the meeting and move into the work section?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So first in the work section, we have the Bellamy Subdivision. This is a discussion of a minor subdivision, location's three seven nine Halix Mill Road. We have Burns Engineering.
Good evening. There we go. You guys hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we were here quite a few months ago with the with this subdivision for Joe Bellamy. And it's at three seven nine Halix Mill Road. When we were here the first time, the big the big tie-up with this with this subdivision is is Halix Mill Road, to be honest with you. Let me just share my screen with you guys. Oh, can I share, Robin, can I share my screen? Okay, so this is the this is the subdivision here. It's a it's a one-point-four, one-acre parcel in the in the R twenty zoning district. So both our both our lots are a little bit oversized for what as far as the minimums are concerned. What what we've done though is we've looked close at the driveway, so I'm going to take you to the to the last page, which is which is going to, well, here we'll go back one page real quick. So so this is the grading plan for the this page shows the grading plan for the driveway. As you'll see where the where the pointer is, there's four four trees that are going to be taken down right along the roadside right there. And there's also going to be some 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 pretty good cut in this general area right here. This cut is what is going to open up the site distance for both our driveway and also relieve some of the 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 it's going to help the road feel a little bit wider through that section. If you if you look here, you can see this hatched area. This is the the proposed cut. So this will be the soil that's 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 removed. The red lines are the the line of sight for the lot one driveway and then the lot two driveway. What with this with this clearing, as is shown, we're looking at about the lot two driveway has about three hundred and sixty-five feet of site distance to the left. Excuse me, and lot one has about fifteen feet more than that. But the the site distance is drastically improved. And the the site distance in both directions are actually come out to be safe distances with with the clearing that as proposed. The what we've what we've how we've accomplished this is we've actually essentially, we have pulled out, where we will be pulling out all the asphalt for the existing driveway. And we will be removing two garages. We're going to clean up the site quite a bit. As you, this is the the as-built demo plan over here, and we're going to take out all this pavement in this area. We're going to take out some retaining walls. We're going to take out this garage, this garage, all this, all this back here. And that's going to keep us keep us in check with the with the stormwater. The stormwater that's coming off of the lot one, which is which has the existing house driveway is going to be picked up with a trench drain across the driveway, flow over into two cul-de-sac chambers and then discharge into the existing catch base and on-site. The drainage, the drainage for the proposed lot will go to the roof leaders will head to a cul-de-sac unit in the driveway will will sheet flow off onto the onto the lawn area. I think that I think that pretty much covers it.
All right, I know when we did the site visit some time ago and knowing that road well, I'm sure the stormwater and everything else could get worked out. It's it's that road, and it's, you know, it was just more up there. We I know all of us on the board at that time felt it was dangerous, and adding another would increase the issue. So I know Dan's on, I don't know, Dan, have you had a chance to take a look at this newest plan?
Yeah, since since we last met on this, I did have an opportunity to meet with the engineer and the applicant out at the site. And the the grading that's proposed, you know, basically, you know, what he said about improving the site distance coming out there as well as people coming around the bend, that extensive grading will will open up the site distance all around. So I think the applicants made an effort to address the site distance issue.
So, but I understand that they're doing what they can, but is this going to make it a safer condition than it exists today? Your professional opinion?
Well, I mean, it would exist today, somebody pulling out of that driveway is going to have limited site distance, and that isn't going to change. So whether, so where you're ending up with the subdivision is that whether it's one house or two houses coming out without these improvements, you'd be, you'd be, it would be difficult to see what's coming. Likewise, anybody driving on the street would would have, their vision would be compromised by the the existing topography. So by by cutting that, you know, the grade down, you're improving the site distance, so all around it becomes a safer condition. Because the the do-nothing scenario, you would still have a dangerous driveway coming out of the existing house. So we'd be improving that condition.
So if we left everything as it is, we've got a hazardous situation. If the proposal as shown that demonstrates an improved site distance, you're improving not only the the existing driveway, but the visibility of the drivers on on the street itself?
That's correct.
That's what I needed to hear.
We're actually going to, for the for the most part, eliminate a hidden driveway as you come from, oh, man, as you're as you're coming from, as you're traveling west, I believe, it's pretty much nonexistent site for the people driving on the road and taking a left, looking left out of the driveway when you're when you're pulling out.
Steve, maybe you could just zoom in on the the grading plan, right, where the new driveway meets the road? I think that would be helpful for the board to see that at a bigger scale.
So. So what's actually happening here is we're picking up the four seventy-two contour over here by this tree, and it runs up against just off the side of the road right now, and we're going to bring that contour back into the property. And the top of this hill, we're going to take four feet off of right here.
Well, Stephen, if a car is in that driveway, someone traveling alone, Halix Mill will be able to see it.
Yes.
And if there was a car in the existing driveway right now?
No.
All right, that's all I needed to hear. We've got two engineers that are licensed in the state of New York, Thomas, we're making a safer condition of an existing driveway.
What about the other other direction? What's the site distance in the other direction?
It's three and change. It's it was better, it's not bad in the other direction. We're going to clear some brush and stuff that's going to along the side of the road is going to clear that up a little bit, but we're looking at three thirty, three thirty, the three and three forty-five.
That's towards the west, right?
That's looking to the to the right as you're pulling out of the driveway.
Okay, and so you're significantly approving looking to the left as you're pulling out of the driveway?
Yes.
And so you're the right. And so you're, the right side condition was already fairly good, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the site distance to the right was, uh, was uh, satisfactory, i- it does, there, there's some brush and stuff that have, that's grown up there and some uh, overgrown shrubs and stuff that are gonna be cleaned up, but uh, uh, other than that, the site distance is good to the right.
Stephen, in the last uh, subdivision you did in town, up in Shrubel, there was also a, you were on a corner there. There was some language I think we put in to keep that, that size distance clear.
Oh, I, I didn't actually do this, I didn't do the subdivision, but I did the site plan for it, uh, Stony Street and somewhere else, uh, I forget what the side road is.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
There, there was some language in there, just so we make sure that this uh, the site distance remains. I think John and Dan, I think we followed.
You can do a sightline easement.
Okay.
You have to keep it, keep it clear. If you wanna do that, we, we can.
We, we could, we could uh, we could establish an easement on the side of the road there, uh, you know, and another thing that we could do with this is that uh, uh, you know, we could also give some of the front, give some of the road frontage to the town so that they have more of a right-of-way to work with.
Well, that's fairly typical, you know, to get, this is an old, old, old road. And so typically you, uh, we ask for, I think it's from the center line of the ro- of the existing right-of-way, whatever you have up to twenty-five feet, so we're moving towards a fifty-foot right-of-way is typical.
Yes.
Any other comments from the board at this time?
No. I, I have a quick one, John, just on that last ti- that last point. Would the town wanna contemplate making the shoulder wider for any reason? If they, if they are a- able to do that, would it make?
We're, we're actually gonna be, we're kinda gonna be doing that as it is. Right now, what happens is, is the edge of the pavement, the uh, the, the certain, the ground surface goes pretty much, you know, straight up and climbs about six, eight feet right there on the side of the road. Right from the edge of the pavement, so we're gonna pull that back and, uh, you know, there's gonna be more room to maneuver and everything else through there. It's gonna, it's gonna feel a lot safer for uh, for even through traffic, because it's not gonna feel so uh, that side, that, that right side bank isn't gonna try to push you towards the center line so much.
Yeah, I think that's a, a great improvement. I mean, I'm, I know it's, there's no bicycle lanes per se, but I'm, you know, I'm sure if there were any kind of pedestrian or bike person in any of those shoulders, any bit of, a little more room there will be helpful, so.
Definitely.
Great.
Be great. Anyone else from the board? Alright, so John, Robin, can we get uh, in the works with that, that site easement? And maybe whatever treatment of that area, so it won't be uh, won't become hazardous after this is uh, or even when it's developed?
Yeah, we can work on that.
Alright, so let's see how that goes and then we'll move forward. Okay. Missing anything on this one? Jim?
Uh, did you wanna set an informational hearing on this? Or do you wanna wait till you see the um, how the easement would be laid out?
What's the thought of the board? I, I think for the most part, it, it looks like it's pretty well established. And that Stephen and the, uh, John and Robin can work out the details as they get ready for that public informational, so Stephen, do you wanna set that meeting?
Sure.
Alright, so why don't we get that set then, Robin? Alright.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night. Thank you for the uh, for the work you did on this.
When is that public information meeting gonna be?
January tenth.
January tenth, okay. Uh, and do I have to, do I have to notice or anything?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll talk to you guys uh, during the week?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night. Next, we have the Foothill Street Solar. This is a discussion of the site plan, location is three eight four nine Foothill Street.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, uh, Joe Shanahan, appearing on behalf of Con Edison, Clean Energy Businesses, the applicant. Uh, before I begin, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to do a quick shadow, uh, shout-out thank you to Nancy and your staff. Uh, I'm back here in Boston, and obviously she and the staff and the board covered the law by sending an email about this Zoom session today, but uh, Nancy went a step beyond that and uh, made a phone call to me, and I very much appreciate it. Had I, had I made the four-hour drive and only found out I was gonna watch this on TV, I might have been a little disappointed, so, thanks very much, Nancy. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to take an opportunity, we're heading for a continued public hearing on January tenth on this uh, proposed solar project. Uh, I had to smile a bit when Mr. Garrigan noted at the beginning of the meeting that the board doesn't often hold the applicant to a timeline and lets the process unfold, because as I look at the calendar, uh, January tenth will be the third anniversary of my first appearance before the planning board on this project, so I appreciate your patience in letting me go through the process, as is uh, the course out there in Yorktown. Just wanted to bring the board up to date uh, before that meeting comes up, and if any matters need to be addressed tonight or in the interim, I'd be happy to do it, uh, either directly or through John Tegger's staff. Uh, but since we last spoke, uh, I think the board members will recall the town hired an outside uh, consultant, Barton, and Logu Ducci to review this process and this project. Uh, they came back with an initial rather lengthy report on November one. Uh, we in turn went back with an equally lengthy response to the consultants, and they subsequently, but for a couple of minor i- cleanup items, which we're addressing this week with the submission, uh, they basically came back to the town with a letter of approval on the project from their review. Uh, in addition, uh, the town engineer, Mr. Cassi, has been good enough to provide us with his report. Uh, he took the time last week to confer with our outside engineering consultants, Bergman Associates. Uh, I wasn't on the call, but I understand it was very productive, he was more than helpful, and uh, we today submitted a response to his three comments in his mellow. Uh, in addition, uh, Mr. Tegger's staff provided us with a memo from the fire department, specifically Fire Inspector Edward Kalis. Uh, we in turn on December fifteenth responded to his concerns uh, and questions about the project. And in fact, I and our consulting engineer will be meeting with the fire chief and the fire inspector on site tomorrow morning to walk it and address any still outstanding issues. Uh, also, since our last meeting, I have submitted a formal uh, mitigation plan under your local solar law and your tree ordinance. Uh, we had quite some time ago submitted a draft of that plan. As our tree inventory was completed and our site plan was tightened up, uh, we were able to tighten that mitigation plan up also. Uh, for any of you that haven't seen that mitigation plan, I'd indicate to you that based on your tree ordinance, uh, we are required to pay a hundred dollars uh, for every protected tree that's disturbed in the project. Uh, we're disturbing sixteen of the thirty-four acres. Uh, so we're covering that, and in addition, we're required to pay three hundred dollars for every five thousand square feet disturbed. And again, sixteen of the thirty-four acres would be disturbed, although most of it will be restored uh, with meadow after the project is done. But the end result, the math comes out to about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in mitigation funds. We've submitted a proposal to the town that would basically uh, provide a one hundred and sixty thousand dollar replanting plan uh, at the site and specifically along Foothill Street. Uh, if you subtract that hundred and sixty thousand dollar planting plan from the overall two hundred and thirty thousand dollar uh, total, uh, in addition to the planting plan, uh, we'd be donating approximately seventy thousand dollars uh, to your tree bank fund under that mitigation plan. There are another, a number of the components in that letter, uh, but that is probably the biggest item uh, to be looked at and considered as we go forward. Uh, that's about it, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to address any questions from anybody at this point. Uh, but otherwise, I wanted to point those things out to the board as we look forward to the January tenth continued public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Um, and yes, I, I know it's been a three-year period, I think we went through a complete code adoption at that time. I know solar, these types of farms were brand new at the time. Um, and I know there's a lot of concerns, I know, uh, if you're following the, the back and forth in town now, there's concerns again. Um, John, I, off topic a little bit, it appears that we're getting a lot of, of the uh, the mitigation and the funding going to the tree bank. Do we know how much is in that bank at this point?
I don't know the exact amount that's in the bank at this point.
And do we know?
I don't think, I don't think it's a significant amount, but maybe in the tens of thousands, but, you know, on the low end, i- if at all.
Okay. And I don't know how the other members of the board feel, but I, we keep hearing about these, the solar sites and the optics, the visual uh, aspects of it, and you know, I, I've said it time and time again, I think our biggest charge with this, especially in the residential area, is uh, that it not be seen. And I'm just wondering if uh, some of the payback to the mitigation should be more focused on screening the project in the area that, that the, the work is taking place. I think at this point, we've been back and forth about the solar, the need, the use, what's going on in New York State. Um, and I know uh, our friends to the north had some objections in the way of the school district and the, the, the town of Putnam. Um, but I, I think most of the, the issues that haven't been addressed yet or that we're still really need to make sure we get right, cause it sounds like the environmental, with the help of John, Robin and the team, is getting worked out. I, it's the visual end of this, in this residential area, and I, I'll say it once, I'll say it a hundred times, I just wanna make sure we get that part of it right. Because as you're driving down Foothill, you know, a part of our charge and the code is to make sure that these, these sites really aren't um, basically seen, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might just interject on that, because it's a very good point. And sometimes as these projects uh, slide through the process ever so slowly, there's a tendency to maybe forget some of the things that have been addressed previously as we look to the issues that are on the table currently. Uh, but largely at the direction of John Tegger, uh, and I've said this to the board previously, but I, I'd like to repeat it because it's important in line with your concerns. Uh, when we first came in with this plan, we were concerned about the visual impact from Foothill Street also. And unlike what we normally do, uh, where we do a chain-length fence only, uh, we thought we were addressing that visual impact uh, very uh, well by proposing a stockade fence outside our chain-length fence along Foothill Street. Uh, when I met with Mr. Tegger, he said, "I don't like stockade fences in Yorktown, I don't want a stockade fence along Foothill Street, fix it." And we took that to heart, we went back out, and I mentioned this hundred and sixty thousand dollar planting program. Our fence is set back off of Foothill Street fifty feet, our panels are set back at least seventy-five or eighty feet. There's a natural buffer along that entire street, but at Mr. Tegger's direction and insistence, quite honestly, we developed a plan uh, which basically brings in mature plantings. These aren't two-foot and three-foot alvebites coming in, that I have to say, trust me, in ten years, they'll be ki- covering this project. Uh, we're coming in with well over two hundred plantings that are in the six to eight feet range, and as you may recall, at the board's direction, we went out and did photo simulations back in February, March, and April of this year, showing you what the site looks like now, what it will look like on day one with the plantings, and what it will look like five years from now on the plantings. And I, I think the board, and I, I won't put words in anybody's mouth, but I think the board was favorably impressed that we had addressed the issue of visual impact, and that's where that hundred and sixty thousand dollars went, thank you.
You're muted, Rich.
Sorry. Uh, thank you very much for that explanation. Uh, I believe in the carpenter's rule, measure twice, cut once. And I, I just wanna make sure that uh, and I understand you guys have been working hard, especially with John and the team, to get this right. I just wanna make sure that we get it right, because whatever happens here, uh, you know, right now, this talk of moratorium and all these other things in reference to these applications, maybe not the ones in the pipeline right now, but uh, it's really gotten people concerned. And I just wanna make sure, again, that when we get this out of the box, that it's done right. Um, I fully understand.
We'll work with Mr. Shanahan and his team to go through it again, to make sure that every area is covered and just to be as certain as we can that the viewshed situation is handled as it is intended in the law, so.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I have one, um, forgive me if I.
Robin muted him.
No, I, I, my fingers came off the, uh, uh, just going to Mr. Seasi's recent memo to you about the SWIP and the orientation, did you address that with, with uh, him yet?
We had a conversation, and again, I shouldn't say we, because I wasn't on the call, our engineers had a conversation with him last week. I understand it was very productive. Uh, we have revised the plans and submitted a narrative uh, explanation uh, to address the concerns he expressed. Uh, they were sent in by email to the planning department late today. I don't expect anyone seeing them with copies to uh, the town engineers, so that's a work in progress, Mr. Park.
Yeah, it's fine.
Aaron, yeah, I just wanna confirm that, it, it appears they addressed the comments and obviously we haven't had an opportunity to go through the resubmitted package, but uh, it appears they've been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, we miss- missing anything on your end?
No.
Dan, this talk, John, anything you'll work with uh, Joe to get to double-check that?
We'll double-check that and we'll help double-check everything else as well.
Thank you. Gotta make sure we get this right. Joe, you missing anything on your end?
No, I appreciate uh, your time tonight, particularly this busy time of year, and I wish you all a happy holiday.
All the best, I'm glad that Nancy and, and the team saved your four-hour trip.
Indeed, thank you again.
Take care, sir. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a town board referral. Location is three two two Chestnut Court. This is Hudson Engineering.
Yes, good evening. Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering, how are you?
Hey, Mike, how are you?
Very good, Mr. Chairman, how you doing?
Good, all's well?
All's well, all's crazy, thank God.
Good to see you.
So, we're here. We, we're here this evening for um, regrading in the rear, rear yard of uh, three twenty-two Chestnut Court. Uh, we're, we're raising the grade up in the rear, the, the rear yard, we have a two-tier retaining wall going along the property line. I've highlighted them in green to um, kinda define them a little bit better. Uh, they start off at, at basically six inches high, going up to approximately uh, five feet high at the highest point, uh, each tier would be five feet high. Uh, we're bringing in approximately sixteen hundred and seventy-five cubic yards of fill uh, to, to raise the grade. So overall, it'll be, the, the rear yard will end up being relatively flat. So overall, it'll be, the, the rear yard will end up being relatively flat. I shouldn't, sorry, I thought I'd put my screen up. So, that'll make more sense from what I just said, that it's highlighted in green, uh, and follows along the property lines, these two areas here. And just to give you an idea of. So, that, this is the, the area of the rear yard through here.
Okay.
And the, this, uh, little shed will actually be removed and then reinstalled, uh, back once the walls go back in.
There's a buffer between the two properties. Dan, have you had a chance to review this? Yeah, I guess the, the biggest thing on this, um, is, um, uh, maybe Mike, if you could bring up the, uh. Light up the, um, there you go. You can see there's a line of trees there along the property line. And I guess, I guess the biggest issue we need to be sensitive to is that back corner, they're raising the grade about ten feet. So, even though it's a two-tiered wall, um, it's, we're really adding a lot of fill back there. So, obviously we want to have some sensitivity to the neighbors and, and the buffer they'd be losing by. By the, by constructing this project. Is this required?
And that's the one thing I would just, if I could just point out here, most, the majority of those trees have all been removed. So those trees are no longer there.
Did anybody get a permit for that?
I, I, I have no idea. That's before my time.
So is that ten foot, if you go back to the other picture, the air, a little bit more of the aerial, or maybe it's there and you could just pull back a little. That, uh, is that a swimming pool there, the other, on the other neighbor's property?
On this street, yes.
And then where would the retaining wall be that would be roughly ten feet high?
Yeah, it would be following along these two property lines.
So, is the face of it going to be on the property line, or how are you handling that?
I, i- it's going to be stepped back a foot or two.
Okay, you got a dimension that, so we know it's, whether it's a foot or two, or?
I just didn't have that drawing up.
And do you have a, a sense of what material you'll be using?
It's a, it, it's set back a foot, uh, from the detail.
Okay.
And I believe the soil. We, we'll have specifications on the soil. It's going to be clean, like run a bank, something along that lines.
Okay, what's the material of the wall?
Unilock.
Unilock, okay.
Mike, do you know if they, they had any discussions with the neighbors about this at all, or?
I, I believe, uh, the applicant is on.
Hi, yes, we're here, Marie Bruno.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. So, are, are your.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. So we've spoken to our neighbors, um, our neighbors immediately. Next to us, and then the ones with the pool, they're kind of like behind us, um, about it. And there haven't been any concerns or issues.
Well, thank you very much for doing that. Uh, you'd be surprised how many people don't, and then it, uh, comes to you later.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, Richard. Uh, I was ju- just going to ask about whether there's a proposed landscaping treatment between the two tiered walls.
Uh, so that was the idea, that was the purpose of doing two walls instead of one large wall that we could. Add in, um, some kind of shrubbery in between them too, so it's not just this giant ten-foot wall.
What happens to the, this is, the property is sloping down to the wall, is that what I see here?
Correct, yes.
So what happens, is there any? Any sheet flow issues on that side there that we, that you need to be concerned about to protect?
We'd actually be de- we'd actually be decreasing the slope of it, so we, which would allow more water to infiltrate. It's currently sloping there and now. So that we're not, we're, we're not having, we're not, we're actually decreasing the flow compared to the flow in the existing conditions.
Okay, yeah, I actually, um, I'm looking at it, it's from five twenty-seven, it's, um, just going down two feet over some distance, okay.
Yeah.
Would there be any, well, you know, I would call them kind of like weeping points on the wall where water would drain out of if it were to.
It's a, it's a unilock wall, so it's a loose jointed wall, so there's not, there, there wouldn't be, uh, weep holes per se.
The, the distance between the two walls is about five, five, six feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Did you get referred to a bucket by any chance?
I, I don't believe so.
No.
One, one other quick question, do you have any, uh, is there an intention to put any kind of fencing on top of the wall? To enclose the yard?
I, I, I think we're going to need to, just as a, as a matter of protection, whether it's. Uh, another row of shrubbery that's dense, or it is actually like a fence along the top rail.
Any idea what kind of fence that would be?
Um, so we're not entirely sure on the, uh, type of fence, um, if we're going to do wood or vinyl. Um, we would have to look into that, but I don't think it's chain link.
So in other words, it's a decor- decorative fence, right?
Exactly. Yes.
Detail you have on the, um, the retaining wall does show a drain there. That presumably would discharge to daylight, so daylight is onto a neighbor's property. These, these issues aren't usually contentious until. A neighbor sees a pipe discharging onto their property.
We'll, we'll make the, the necessary adjustments, right? From, from having done the walls before, we haven't come across the need to it.
So, do we have any planning issues here?
No, I don't think there's any real deep planning issues, but I think. I think it, you know, how it's, the treatment towards the neighbor, I think is important, including the landscaping and the fence. So in terms of the selection, I'm assuming the fence is only going to be on the top tier wall. You're not going to have a fence on the mid-tier, I'm.
Correct.
Okay, so those details I think should be worked out and get, get on the plan, and I, I would recommend, you know, some type of landscaping plan. That you can adhere to, you know, in, in some loose fashion, it doesn't have to be exact numbers, you know, but certain selection of plants. So it's, so it remains attractive and is, is maintained attractive since most of the impacts are to your two neighbors, so.
Understood.
And I guess we would need to know, um, a, a tree inventory, so we could look at the mitigation and looking at the. Uh, the twenty eighteen aerial photos of tho- that, those trees that. There, so in the, um. That oblique view shows them gone, but, uh, I believe that's the twenty eighteen photo. Um, you can see there's trees there.
Yeah, this view, this view is from twenty, uh, from April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Ten trees, Michael.
Okay.
So, you may be able to. Go and do a little figuring on that.
Right, well, yeah, we'll take a look at that and review it.
Alright, so Mike, it sounds like there's some details you got to work out.
Yep.
And you can work with John or Robin?
Yeah, that's not a problem at all.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Jim?
Nothing for me.
Dan, you'll work with them?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright.
Michael, it's good seeing you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Have a good holidays, everyone.
So, you and your family, take care. Alright, next on the agenda, we've got the old Crotton Gate House. This is a discussion of a lighting plan. Location's eleven Crotton Dam Road. And this is the DEP.
Yes, so, good evening, um, my name's Mark Del Walzo, and I'm the engineer with Bureau Water Supply for New York City DEP. I'm here this evening to go over any questions we have regarding our upgrades to the exterior lights we're going to, uh. Place on the old Crotein Gate House. And what I like to do, if I can, I do have an aerial view just to show the location. If, I'm not familiar with Zoom as well as others. Uh, maybe I can show a, a map, um, if I click on my screen, will that work? Um, let me see. Well.
Bottom of the screen, you have to hit the green button that says share screen, and then you have to choose the screen.
Okay. So, well, let me. What I'm showing right here, hopefully you guys can see it now.
No.
No, let me head.
Try it again.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay, so this is the, uh, photometrics we have for the, uh, upgrade lights that we're putting on the exterior of the building. Uh, we have two reasons for these lights. Uh, one is for just to improve, um, security and, um. You know, obviously, uh, visual needs, and the second is when we have, um, typically our. Our deliveries of chemicals will be during the day, but that sometimes due to scheduling, they do happen after hours. And so that would occur, uh, there would be switch activated. I wonder if I can switch, um. Yeah, I think I can. So this, this drawing here shows the, um, unloading lights. Of, on the north, here's Crotton Dam Road, and here is the, um, chemical unloading area. And if I can go to the next page. I can show you the other lights, and so that's again, this is the, uh, uh, where the containment pad is. And this is for the, uh, security lights that we'll have on, just so we can make sure we have the, uh, containment pad area for the chemical deliveries, uh, well lit. And I'm going to see if I can unshare for a moment. I'm not having luck with that, I'll go to a different drawing. I don't know if you can see the location, this is an aerial view of the gatehouse, the old Crotein Gate House.
Yep.
And I just want to point out here, this is Crotton Dam Road where my cursor is. I'm not sure if you guys can see that or not. Uh, that is, uh, parallel adjacent to the reservoir, and the old Crotein Gate House is the smaller of the two buildings. And it's, uh, the back of the building is, um, uh, backed up to the, uh, rock ledge and cliffs. I provided a, uh, detailed plan that showed the, uh, this is, again, this is the locations of the, uh, lighting, photometrics. Able to, yeah, here's the, um, installation plan. Again, the road area is up here, Crotton Dam Road. This is the, uh, lighting that we have shown, where we'll have the containment pad area, the spill containment pad area for chemical deliveries. And then on the north and on the road, we have the upgrades to the existing lighting, and, uh, those are LED lights, and then we have a lighting schedule that shows that. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to, uh, answer on you.
John, do we have any code issues?
No, we're actually going to be complying with our code. So, I, I don't think there's any, other than that, the lighting there now is not, uh, an approved lighting plan, so we're going to cure that. Um, I don't know of any code issues pursuant to what they've proposed. Um, I'll check into the, and I know that I had a conversation with Mark about it, check into the fixtures that they've selected, make sure that they're shielded. Uh, that, that would be the only thing that I think we really need to look at, and, uh, I don't think we have a problem with, um. The foot candles at property lines either, so.
And, uh, just on my end, I, there's no greater responsibility, I think, they have in the protection of the, the water system, so.
Right.
I'm completely in favor of this.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions from the board?
None.
Jim?
Nothing for me.
Dan, I don't think there's any engineering issues on this one, although you probably want to get out there and see the station. Yeah, we always like to check out these things, see what they're up to. Alright, Dan is, uh, is our resident, uh, engineer historian.
And it is, uh, the old gatehouse is historic, and obviously we'd be happy to bring you out. I believe it was built sometime between nineteen ninety-two and, uh, nineteen ninety-six, if I recall, so.
Yeah, now we, we were here to see the old gatehouse when you de-watered that. That was quite a little project.
I can imagine.
Okay. Work with John and good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
It'll, it'll come, it'll come back probably in, in January, and we'll get, uh, we'll move towards a resolution on it. Just working out some of the details, we'll get a bucket to look at it, and, uh, we'll talk about any other procedural requirements that we have, so.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John. Thank you, board. Thank you, chairman.
Take care. Okay, next we have three, seven, one, seven, Cromhound Road LLC. This is a discussion of the site plan, location is the same. We have Joe Rena.
Hi, everybody. Evening. Ron, can I take the screen?
Yes.
Can, can you see that or no? Yes.
Yep.
You can see that, I screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The last time I presented this to you, it's three, seven, one, seven, Crompon Road. This is the, uh, old Willmill, Windmill Restaurant site. Uh, we're proposing a, uh, retail warehouse type building on the site. This is the site right here. This is the windmill structure, the old windmill structure up in the front. This is the existing building and the existing parking area. Or area that was used for parking previously. This is old Crompon, uh, on the back end of the site. The, uh. The project is to propose a, a building that's about twenty thousand square feet. About four thousand square feet of that would be, uh, retail. Uh, Mr. Galero, the property owner, um, is thinking that this would be, uh, specialty retail, something like kitchen cabinets or. Uh, uh, you know, uh, anything, anything selling, uh, specialty goods. With warehouse behind it. Who, additionally, the warehouse is proposed to be broken up into smaller units. Uh, making it available, and hi- uh, his intent is to make it available for contractors, small contractors, so they can have a place to. Park their vans, put material, uh, have a small office inside. Uh, there's a, there's a demand for that, and there, there isn't many places where, uh, a small contractor can go and. And get a space, uh, wi- without, you know, buying a piece of property or something. Uh, uh, larger magnitude as far as warehouse space. Um, so the, the main access is going to be off two oh two. The two existing entrances that are here and here will be closed. There'll be just one new entrance right here, uh, which will be aligned. With the parking area and driveway. Um, there are some parking spaces in the front here, which, which service the retail aspect, which would be the front end of the building here. And then the smaller spaces would be along this, this frontage here and this frontage here of the building. And again, it'll probably be a series of overhead doors that'll access smaller independent spaces. There'll be no second floor to the building. Uh, there may be loft spaces for offices or, or, uh, storage of materials for, for the various contractors that is going to be in there. Um, there's a proposal for overflow parking or employee parking if necessary. overflow parking or employee parking, if necessary, in the back, that's gonna be a gravel parking lot. Then the front parking lot will be a paved parking lot. As requested, the existing windmill structure, um, is gonna be incorporated in the, into the building, it'll be rehabilitated. Uh, uh, it's being evaluated right now to see if it's structurally sound, but the intent is to incorporate it into the, uh, into the new, into the building. Um, there is currently, uh, town sewer line, which runs public sewer line, it's a, uh, low pressure main, it runs up the left side of the pro- the right side of the property, depending on the side you look at here, but as far as this plan goes, is on the right. And there's a town water main that runs up along the left side, up along the back. Um, there'll be no driveway connection from the front to the back, only a set of stairs that will, will go from the upper part down to the lower. But, that's the extent of the project, um. Fears about moving this forward, we've already started looking at what would need to be done from a traffic, traffic perspective. Uh, in Crompton Road, to make adjustments for turning lanes and whatnot. And, um, we'd like to get your impression, and again, want to move forward with this project.
Any comments from the board?
Um, they, uh, tried to save that, um, structure, the windmill structure, it'll be, it'll be, um, good for the project. That's the landmark, everybody knows it.
That's right.
Uh, Joe, the only, one thing comes to my mind in terms of accessing this in case of emergencies, so I would want, I mean, I don't know if it's significant that you can't get from the front to the back or vice versa, and also the length of the side of the building that may not be accessible, so I'd be interested in seeing what fire, you know, what, what the fire memo might be on this one.
No, I don't-
I don't know if it's an issue or not.
Right, right. I, I, I don't know what to wait and see, I guess. On that, I mean, uh, basically, a fire truck can pull right into the site as access to two sides of the building. Or come into the back and get to the rear side of the building, which normally is, you know, uh, satisfactory to them, but it will have to wait and see.
Yeah.
Well, it's also, what kind of warehouse? Do you have any idea, or?
No, we don't, I, I, I mean, we, a- as I said, his intent is for um, the in- individual spaces to be for, for trade contractors who need, uh, places for their uh, vans and, and equip and store, um, store of tools and, and whatnot. And as far as the retail use here, there's no tenant at this point that's, that's been, uh, in consideration.
Well, I, and I, I think the reason I bring that up is dependent on the use of the building and what's gonna be stored in there. This'll probably be non-combustible. I'm sure there'll be a, a, a sprinkler system in there. Um, which, to Aaron's point, when the, the fire inspector and building inspector look at it, they'll, they'll address all those concerns.
Yeah.
Contractors is, I think, extremely important, especially in the area. I know, and John, we've had a few come in, and they were trying to legalize spaces where they just, you know, go onto a residential property and take up shop. Is it the visual of this? The area, I think it might clean up other sections of the town, where they're just squatting on areas.
I agree, and this is the entire site C four here, correct?
That's correct.
There's no split, that's good.
Joe, what, what's the, what's the piece of property that's at the east side of it, that, the long, parallel piece there?
Yeah, uh, I'm not sure, John, it's not part of this site. Yeah, no, that is, that is the lawnmower place.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And there actually is like a-
Landscaped Island in there?
Absolutely.
I, I gotta tell you, I think this is, this is, this is a, a great, great use. I think it, I really think you give these contractors somewhere to go. You know, do correctly, I think that'd be a big help for the area.
Okay, we're back on.
So what did Tom do, Robin?
Tom did nothing.
So Rich, my, my one question on this is that, it is all C four, right, is that what we said?
Yeah.
Um, but on that old Crompton Road, I mean, that, that, it, that's a residential area right there, across the street you have a house next door, I believe, there's a a home just to the next side, so that gravel up off of old Crompton Road, uh, Joe, I mean, is it? You know, I'm just wondering if it can be treated as a, an area that shouldn't be where guys are just parking trucks or or anything like that, that we should be respectful to the community that's just, you know, right there. Um, so is that, any thoughts on what the gravel parking lot would be like? How heavily used or?
Yeah, I, you, you know what, I think it's, I, I think, um, his idea is, uh, all these contractors that are gonna be, uh, taking up these spaces, you know, they're gonna have workmen that show up. Um, and, and they're gonna possibly need a place to park, um, if there's, if there isn't enough room down below and they could park up there. And I think the intent is to park trucks or vans up there. I, uh, you know, you can stipulate that if you want. Uh, the idea is, if, if, I don't, I don't know how clearly you can see this on my screen here. Um, but, but the intent is to leave as much of the natural vegetation in between as possible, so you just really almost see the driveway access coming in.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that'd be good, I mean, I was looking at another browser through the Google aerial shots and street view and things like that, and, uh, i- it's just, you know, that's a, it's a beautiful road with beautiful homes on one side and a commercial section on the other side, and so things like, uh, hours of use and lighting, obviously, is always a concern in this particular area. But, uh, you know, we'll, we'll get to those details, I'm sure. I know we, this is unrelated to this applicant, clearly, but, you know, we spoke at one time about that golf station down on the beginning of old Crompton Road. And, you know, one of the things we wanted to see happen was the backside of that get kind of cleaned up with a, you know, a nicer fence or nicer landscaping and so forth, and I don't think that ever really happened, but, uh, just be trying to be, trying to be sensitive to the community that's right there adjacent to this commercial area.
Understood.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I agree with, with them a hundred percent. This is about the treatment of it, you have to make it look the part. You know, it's a great use, but you also, you're gonna get gripe from, you know, the residents across the street, they're not gonna wanna hear it. You know, obviously, these contractors aren't gonna be working there, it's just their home base. Um, but I agree, it's gotta be treated as if it's residential.
I think it looks like about thirty feet from the side of that back parking lot to the, uh, Westley property line, but you could show us those details and what you intend to do over there, that'll help.
Okay.
And then we could all individually drive by, take a look, I know I've been to the place next door quite a bit. We missing anything, John?
So you want to get it set up for a PIH?
Yeah.
Informational hearing?
I think that's the idea.
Okay.
Oh, just one other question, Joe, you're not putting commercial heavy, you know, equipment back there, it's gonna be parking for cars for more like office space for these guys, is that the idea?
Uh, no, yeah, so, no, um, it, it's really just for, um, employees of, you know, the contractor spaces, they have a place to park if, if the, if the area down below is, is loaded up. Um, there's, it's not to be for equipment, um, you know, or overnight use, it's really just for the, for the employees, and, you know, we're making it gravel, so it's low impact, number one, and number two, because, um, the expectation is not gonna be, there's not gonna be a heavy use of it, so.
You're not putting, uh, you know, earthmoving equipment and things, just gonna be regular vehicles and small trucks and stuff like that?
Yeah, he, that is not the type of operation he wants there. He wants a small, the small contractor, the electrician, the plumber, the carpenter, those type of, you know, uh, smaller, uh, contractors that don't have a home base or a place for a home base. So, that's, that's-
Okay.
It's great.
You, you can specify, you know, the, the usage of that lot, I think. So you can limit, for instance, uh, or condition that there's no overnight storage of commercial vehicles or any vehicles, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I think that'd be important. Okay. We look forward to the details, Joe.
Very good.
Okay, next we have the, uh, Martino Contracting.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pan that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, uh, present that tonight.
Okay.
Um, I, that, that was put on a little prematurely, we gotta do a little more work on there.
Okay. Alright, then next we have the Ryder Subdivision, this is a discussion of a minor subdivision. Locations five three two, Underhill Avenue. No other than Joe Rena.
So, um, this is, this is a project that was presented you, to you by Dan Ciarcia. It's kind of been around for a little bit, um, this is the parcel right here. Uh, this is, uh, French Hill Road here, here's Overhill Street. So it's just, it's two, three, three properties west of, um, French Hill Road on the same side. The, uh, the site has been developed. Uh, there was a two-story house on there, um, the, the building department had the, uh, the property owners take the building down. Here's the, the existing driveway comes in here. And as you can see, you've got a big area here that was maintained, it's lawn and whatnot, for the property. A portion of which, um, is considered wetland of the town definition. So, the area that we're talking about, that's, that's wetland, is this area here. Uh, this is the wetland delineation right here. So this front portion of the property in here, it is considered wetland by town definition. That tree area is basically in the front here, and the rest of this is all open lawn, lawn area. Um, so the proposal is to subdivide this into two parcels, it's zone, uh, R one forty. Right, the proposal meets all the standards for the zone. The difficulty here is, um, you know, getting through and around the wet, wetland, and once you get beyond, once you get beyond this area here, now you're into the slope or where the property slopes up in the back. So, um, the preferred proposal by the applicant is, uh, what I'm showing you now, and that is uh, to place the driveway over the existing driveway that peels off right about here and heads, uh, heads to the east and, uh, kind of cuts off a small portion of the wetland, this little triangle of the wetland here. Place one house over essentially the footprint of the original house. Uh, do some grading in the back here to provide a proper backyard. And the second house would be placed a little further up the hill, um, and, and, and to the east. Uh, both of, both the houses and the dr- every, almost all the improvements being proposed here are within the buffer. This is the only impact on the wetland, is cutting off this section of wetland here. The, the, uh, property is, is being, uh, the property is served by town water, and, um, each house will be served by a septic system. So, there's a, a, uh, an alternative to that, uh, which the planning board, you know, at that time, had asked Dan to take a look at, and that was to push this house up the hill, and you know, I think it needs to be weighed out whether it's worth it or not to do that, because you're in the slope, it's a lot more disturbance in the slope, a lot more uh, area where, um, trees are gonna be rem- removed, construction of retaining walls, um, to me, it doesn't seem like sensible solution, it, it almost, the natural location for this house is on the footprint of the original house. And keeping that, keeping away from that slope as much as possible. Uh, so, uh, there, there are areas for mitigation, uh, based on, on our calculations, um, from an area perspective. I'm sorry. From an area perspective, um, we're not able to provide a one-to-one ratio. Uh, we can for the wetland disturbance, but not for the buffer disturbance. Um, looking at it first blush, uh, you know, we're gonna, Steve Marino will, will address that and, and see what he can come up with. But, um, that, that can further, you know, give us some, maybe some additional thoughts on mitigation that we can do to offset the offset the, um, impacts into the buffer. Um, as fo- as far as I know, the, the, um, the source of the wetland is, and, and Steve will speak to this when, when, the next time or before you. Um, there are sieves coming out of the slope here, and that feeds this area, and, and what, like, as I said, which is, um, the weapon area. However, traditionally, it has been a lawn area, now there times a year you walk out there and it is definitely spongy, and, and that might be a majority of the time, but, but there are times you can walk out there and it's, and it's a usable area. Uh, so that's, that's, yeah, um, the take on that, I don't know if you have any questions or, um, you know, you wanna take a look at the, the other project, so, again, but this is, uh, this is what, what we would prefer to go with this one here.
So could you go back to the aerial?
To the aerial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So your preferred plan, that, that, uh, footprint there is generally the location of your preferred plans?
That, that's correct.
House number one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and so-
And, and house number two would be right about here. About, actually, more like over here, yeah.
And what, what is all that, mostly like a, a scrub, scrubby?
Down in here, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
And where, and the sieves are coming from? Any, you know, all different areas on the hill, or is it in a particular?
No. No, I, 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 I think it, it comes in multiple areas. It might, it might be just a, you know, a pretty broad area where, you know, so, so what you have, John, is the hydrology here. You're going from a very steep grade um, down to this essentially moderately sloped area, almost flat area in here and, and the water's just going to, you know, just hydraulic pressure of the water is going to push the water to the surface. So that's what you're getting here. And that's why that area um, is, is seeing the seeps come up and uh, make that area wet.
And, and generally, once it gets into that uh, grassed area sort of closer to the road, does it then essentially move to the west?
No, it moves, it moves to the east.
It moves to the east, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that scrubby area basically is that uh, you know, wetland type?
In here, yes, down in here. So if we go back to the plan, so you can see here's the wetland line here, right? Right, this is it here. So they were into the, as you get over here, we're into that scrubby uh, that's, you know, scrub areas in here.
Yeah. And your sense of when you do the construction, how it will affect the groundwater, in particular, the seeps and so forth?
Uh, yeah, we, we would have to intercept, intercept those, um, those areas to protect, of course, protect the houses and the foundations um, and the driveway. Uh, so we would be intercepting that water uh, and, and uh, conveying it back on the oth- on the other side of, of the driveway or the east side of the driveway back into that wetland area.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Are you asking us to give you a preferences to these two layouts at this point, so you can proceed?
Uh, I, yes, I think if that, if, if you're ready to, uh, that would be appreciated, yeah.
Because I know that it, it seems that both plans are in the buffer pretty much.
Correct.
And the impacts to the wetlands on that shared driveway is really the same either way. It goes, still seems to go through that corner.
Correct.
And I think there's less disturbance to the buffer if you keep the house down the slope a little bit.
That's right, because you're, you're basically putting it in, in the area that's al- already been developed.
Yeah, makes, that seems to make sense to me to focus on that side.
Agree with Aaron.
I, I agree with Aaron. I, I just, I, again, they're better situated, I think, kind of not right in line, but just kind of offset a little bit. And the disturbance is already there and you don't have to mess with the slope. Uh, like the uh, the one you're showing now is the one I would prefer.
Yes, yes. My sentence.
All right. We missing anything?
Oh, so at this point, we, you know, we could start to look at some of the more detail engineering on it. Um, come back to you with a, with a plan that's a little more solid and show what the mitigation potential is. And then uh, maybe we can do a P I H. If one hasn't done already, but it probably been a while, so we probably have to do it again, would be my guess.
Yeah, and you got some work to do.
Yeah.
Sorry, John.
Uh, I have nothing on that. Retracting my uh.
We did a public informational in twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Hey Joe, just one quick question. Um, these, both properties, if I'm recalling where that original home was, it's pretty set, it's set back pretty well from the road.
Uh, yeah, it is. I can tell you, um, the, it's about a hundred and seventy-five feet back from the road.
So I'm, I am just thinking, you know, and looking at the drawing that you had there, obviously when you're on a road, it's the home typically is parallel to the road or what have you. Is there any benefits at all to rotating either one of these homes on its kind of axis to gain more of a yard or anything like that? I, you know, I don't think it would look unusual if either one of them, because they're supposed to set back so far, that you could rotate them kind of on their axis to gain maybe better yard or something like that.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that, that, the only problem with that is by, by rotating, it puts me more into the slope, right? Because I'm pivoting, I'm pivoting towards the road. Which, that, that would not be my preference because that puts me closer to the wetland. So I would be pivoting back and more into the slope.
Got it.
I'm better off just staying parallel to the slope.
Got it. Okay.
All right. I think that's a wrap.
Okay.
You missing anything?
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Same to you.
Happy New Year.
We'll see you in the new year.
Absolutely. Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas. New Year. Tom, we were done before nine.
Not bad.
He's gone.